Looking okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I will unshare until it is then ready.
I'm gonna go off script and say highly in that we appreciate the greeting. You're muted Christina.
The greeting that says that we all look fabulous, I limit. Good evening everyone. I see that it's 5:30. We're gonna wait just one more minute and then we'll go ahead and get started. Alright, good evening everyone. Welcome to our town hall tonight, Thursday, May 6th. Tonight's town hall is about traffic calming. So I'm just gonna give a little bit of a background and then I'm gonna turn it over to my teammates. Just a few housekeeping items. I want to let you know that our Q and A feature is up and running. And so if you prefer to put your questions or your comments and do it in written format, you can go ahead and do that. We would just ask that you would add your email address so that in the event that we don't get to your question tonight, we can respond via email. In addition to that, you can ask live questions or share your comments by raising your virtual hand. And you can do star nine to do that if you're calling in from a phone. In addition to that, we do have in the chat an email address that our city clerk has put in there. And so you can type your questions in the Q and A. Or you, if you prefer after the fact, after this evening, you can go and email them to pio@morganhill.ca.gov. And tonight's town hall will go through 6:30. So we'll have a stop at 6:30 and we'll follow up with any remaining questions after that. So this item comes back to the community and to the council as a result of this being a future agenda item that the council brought forward. And so on March 17th, at the council meeting, we brought forward an item for the council after a council member asked us to bring this back. Asking the council, council, do you want us to reconsider? And have us come back with options for our downtown for traffic calming? And so the majority of the council decided, yes, please do come back. And so we are in that process right now. And so we had a downtown visioning summit. And you're gonna hear the results of that and some feedback that we received as a result of that summit. That will be part of tonight's discussion. And then in addition, we have tonight's town hall. And then the next step after that is this item will come to council for consideration at the regular council meeting on Wednesday, March 19th, excuse me, May 19th. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to my teammate Chris Keone, Public Services Director, who's going to start the presentation.
Alright, thank you Christina. I am gonna jump straight into this. I will be presenting with my teammate Assistant City Manager Edith Ramirez. So we'll be passing it back and forth. And and we, we know that this is a conversation where we want to hear from you. So we're gonna move quickly through many of our slides. And, and get to the Q and A and, and the time to hear from you all as our, our community of Morgan Hill. So as Christina mentioned, the council has specifically tasked us with bringing this item back, which includes traffic calming for the downtown. And specifically relooking at the lane reduction program for Monterey Road through the downtown. Now, the council in doing this responded to requests from our businesses in the downtown who are trying to recover from the pandemic and have asked the council to move forward with looking at this potential lane reduction, traffic calming for several reasons, to increase safety for our residents and visitors using all modes of transportation in and to the downtown. Slowing down traffic, reducing noise, protecting our small downtown from ever increasing cut through traffic. Looking at repurposing space in the downtown to help our businesses and people there thrive. Now, when we talk about traffic calming at the city, the first thing that pops into our head is Vision Zero. And what Vision Zero is, it's actually a national movement policy per se that Morgan Hill, through our, our city council adopted a specific Morgan Hill Vision Zero policy in 2018 that guides decisions and policies that we make when it comes to traffic and use of the right of way. And what Vision Zero is at the very basic is a philosophy and a policy that puts human life ahead of traffic. And it does that through building bigger and better street, building better and safer streets, educating the public, enforcing laws and creating change. Now, at the heart of Vision Zero is a paradigm shift. The first paradigm is the old way of thinking about traffic, use of our roadways and right of ways. And that way of thinking is that traffic accidents and fatalities relating to collisions are inevitable because humans make errors when they're driving. Now, the shift comes to the way of thinking and believing that those fatalities, injuries and those things are preventable by, by understanding that humans are gonna make mistakes, but that by through engineering enforcement, education, we can develop a system that saves lives and reduces the number of those things that happen. And the first thing we talk about when we say this is speed. If you look at the little graphic in the upper left-hand corner, it demonstrates this. So a car traveling 20 miles an hour hits a pedestrian. That pedestrian with the car driving 20 miles an hour is only 5% likely to be killed in that collision. Where if the car is driving 30 miles an hour, they're 45% likely to be killed. And 40 miles an hour, 80 for 85% likely to be killed. And so that describes how speed impacts fatalities when it comes to pedestrian vehicle collisions. What is, what is impacting us even more is that this trend across our country, across our state. And, and here at home is more people are being struck and killed while walking in the last five years. As you can see in the chart in the upper right. And even now with COVID and the pandemic where more people are out and using our right of ways for non-motorized transportation, recreation and use, that risk is ever increasing. And we also know that older adults are the ones that are disproportionately affected by this. So what we also believe through our Vision Zero policy is it is impossible to prioritize both speed, meaning how fast we get traffic through areas and safety for drivers, pedestrians and bicyclists. It is impossible to prioritize both. Now, what does this mean from a practical sense? Just say you're heading into the downtown, heading south on Monterey Road and you're coming past Main Avenue and you're coming to First Street. Right now, there's a crosswalk there. One scenario for traffic calming, Vision Zero in engineering improvement would be to add a stop sign at this location. And what the stop sign does could do is it could slow drivers, stop them at the crosswalk. And then when they start driving again, they'd be at five miles an hour, 15 miles an hour where they reach potential areas of conflict with pedestrians, which as the previous slide demonstrated, would at those speeds would reduce the risk of injury if there was a collision. The second scenario, if you look at the picture on the right, no stop sign. Just the way it is now without our flashers, pedestrian activated flashers that we have there now. And we have a 23-foot wide roadway. Say I'm a pedestrian and I am on the sidewalk on the right side of the road and I'm gonna cross to the median in Monterey. And as I start to, as I start to walk across the street, a car in the right lane stops to, to let me walk. Now, what, where, where the risk is increased is a car on, in the left lane, maybe speeding through 25, 30 miles an hour. And their vision of me starting to get in the crosswalk is blocked by the car on the right, which creates more of a risk. Now, how can that conflict be resolved through lane reduction? Well, the first thing is there'd be no vehicle in the right lane to block the vision of the car in the left lane from seeing that pedestrian. And it reduces the space where a conflict between a pedestrian and a vehicle could occur from 23 feet to 11 feet, which in this case reduces that area by over 50%. That's how engineering and Vision Zero works and things we look at when we're looking at Vision Zero. With Vision Zero specific to Morgan Hill, we have lots of strategies that we are implementing. How our police enforce traffic violations, how we plan for our capital improvement program. But specifically in the downtown, what we're really trying to, what our policy really emphasizes is really seeking out opportunities to provide a balance for safety when it comes to vehicles, bicyclists and pedestrians. So that's what we're trying to do. And I will toss it over to Edith.
Thank you, Chris. So, you know, in the context of Vision Zero and the use of Monterey Road, we need to think about what is the purpose of Monterey Road? So today Monterey Road, we use it all the time, but that was the day that Monterey Road was owned by the state and used as a major freeway to connect San Jose to the city of Monterey. Now that Monterey belongs to us, we need to really think about what is the purpose and what do we want out of that road? Now, it will always be a major connector, right? A major traffic connector for folks that are commuting. But today we also have Butterfield Road that has been built and is now being used successfully as a bypass. So again, in thinking about Monterey Road, in 2015, we put together a pilot program to look at how do we do traffic calming in Morgan Hill? This is a topic this community has debated for 20 years. And the main policy consideration for us as a community is, do we want Monterey Road to serve as a commuter road for South County? Or do we want to prioritize Monterey Road for our community to make it pedestrian friendly and a multimodal neighborhood? So when we did the pilot study in 2015, we were looking at a range of things and we wanted to set the bar so high as we were testing this pilot project. We looked at 16 different things that we were gonna study. Those things included, can we improve safety? Can we reduce noise and air pollution? Can we increase and make it safer for bicyclists? Can we create community gathering spaces? Can we make the space economically viable, yet at the same time maintaining mobility? So we wanted to accomplish all these things, yet at the same time, we still wanted to be able to move the traffic. So I'm not gonna go through all these numbers today. So we're gonna move faster through these slides. But we did look at parking, we looked at noise, we looked at the impact on transit at collisions. We looked to see if the cars were actually going slower with the one lane reduction. We looked at emergency response time. Go on, Chris. The number of families, especially children that were in downtown using their bikes. And how much did the lane reduction impact a person that was driving from point A to point B? What was the actual impact on their commute? And what we learned in the, at the end of the day, at the end of the results, that even though the traffic speeds didn't change, that means that really the traffic remained at the same speed. And that could be good for commuters, but it could also be bad for folks that were looking to slow down the traffic. But we did find that there were many very positive things that happened through the study. The number of people that were cycling in downtown and accessing downtown for biking tripled from 74 cyclists to 214. And the neatest thing is that the number of children and bicycles really increased. We saw that many of the heavy large trucks ended up moving out of downtown and using Butterfield bypass. We saw that the number of parking spaces were moving, which, which was good because it meant that people were coming downtown. So even though generally the feedback was really, really good, the feedback from the business community was very unclear. People were still not quite sure that this was the right thing for us. And in retrospect, when we look back, we now realize that we were going through a lot of change at that time. We had four sites under development. We had construction impacts. We were relocating dozens, a couple of dozen businesses out of downtown. The parking garage was not, had not been completed. So there was a lot of change at that time. So again, bringing back to Monterey and the purpose and how we use Monterey, one of the things that we need to keep in mind is that Monterey, especially downtown, is used heavily for non-motorized travel. So for people that are on bicycles and they're walking, we have a number, a high number of high density projects around the downtown. We have the main bus route that goes through Monterey Road and many of our residents use Monterey Road to get to the bus and they walk to the bus, obviously. So increasing safety has always been part of the city's main guiding documents. Chris?
Yeah, just to add a little more on connectivity. Travel to and through the downtown is different now than it was just a few years ago. Downtown is not just a place for shopping and dining, although the shopping, dining experience continues to evolve and improve. It's a place for families to recreate, to relax, to exercise. And, and you see, you see the difference. And that's where safety becomes so important. You know, there's people using our parks on both sides of Monterey, our permanent parks, our pop-up park, going to the farmer's market, going, walking up and down without even having to go into a restaurant. There are activities. And the people going to do these things aren't all driving to downtown anymore because of the housing developments that Edith is talking about. And our downtown is a place for everyone and we want it to be a place people can, can get around to safely. I mean, how many times in the last couple of years have you seen a parent pushing a stroller across Monterey Road with little kids in tow? You didn't used to see that as often as you see it now with all the amenities we have. And that's why safety is, is critical in the downtown. And now let's talk about traffic. We know this is a subject everyone, that frustrates everyone. It frustrates me. We may frustrate my neighbors. They tell me it frustrates many people. And you know, when, when growth happens and traffic occurs, it impacts us. The interesting thing about Monterey Road, if you look at the table on the right, actual traffic counts over the years have been decreasing on Monterey Road from just under 25,000 in the late eighties, early nineties to under 16,000 in 2015. And there's many reasons for that. The, you know, phased construction of Butterfield Boulevard was a big part, but also enhancements to the downtown. Adding signals, adding bulb outs, improving the downtown has gradually made the downtown less of a place to drive through and more of a place to drive to. Now, when we talk about the lane reduction program, the downtown project is not the first lane reduction program. Monterey Road goes to three lanes north of the downtown, just south of Cochrane Road. And in the early 2000s, it used to be that two lanes coming into town on Monterey Road were in place and it was one lane out of town as you drove, drove under the train tracks. At that time, the city specifically looked to reverse that so that it made it more difficult for people coming into, coming into the downtown on Monterey Road that went down to one lane versus going out of the downtown, which went up to two lanes. So we already have a restriction and lane reduction program in place, be it a little bit different one than we're talking about right now. The other thing with traffic, we, we, that frustrates us all, especially us who work for the city and live in the city as well, is the impact of 101 and the increasing impact. We are at the center of the hourglass. So as commuters from the south travel north to go to work in Silicon Valley, one-third of that traffic coming from the south, going to the north, not stopping in Morgan Hill, uses our roadways instead of Highway 101, which, which is tough for us as a community to deal with during those commute hours. We also know that Hale Avenue is now in progress and anticipated for completion in 2023. And we know it will provide that arterial street on the west side of town that will alleviate and improve the need, reduce the need for people to drive through Monterey Road just to get to their places of residence or, or, or other, other locations. The other thing we know is Butterfield is a viable alternative to the downtown from up to driving through the downtown for most. The 2015 pilot project showed that this was a primary alternate route during the pilot and that the, it was Butterfield that was used in a far greater capacity than people cutting through the west side of the, of the city. Now, when we talk about this, just a little graphic representation. If, if someone is gonna drive through the city or drive through a portion of the city and would like to not use the downtown and use Butterfield Boulevard, whether they exit at Cochran and join back on Watsville or exit at Main and join back on Dunn, your travel distance is only 0.7 miles greater than it would be if you drove through the downtown. And depending on the time of day, this can either save you time or not save you time. But for 0.7 miles, it, it could be something that we think could be a benefit to the downtown if there's no interest in doing anything in the downtown. And just one final point on the 2015 pilot. And we hear a lot that why is this coming back again? We thought this was over. Even in 2015, when the council did not elect to move forward with a permanent implementation of the pilot, council members at that time recommended that this be reviewed in the future and encourage future councils to continue to review this as an option down the road. And the timing wasn't right at that time. So as we come back, that is what our council has asked us to do. So this project was never shelved permanently. It was used as a pilot project to help inform us of what could happen in the future. Edith?
So the future is now. The future, the future is, is outdoors. And that is the one thing that we continue to hear and learn from COVID-19. Even when things go back to normal, we know that we're never gonna, gonna go back to normal. We know that the community wants and needs a different sense of safety, a different sense of community. And what we have already seen over the last year is that our parks, our spaces are so needed for, for the safety of our community. And going forward, we see, like every other community in the nation, looking at our streets, at our spaces and trying to rethink, how can we repurpose and enhance some spaces to give them to the community? And, and the beauty of it is that as doing so, not only are you giving an opportunity to, to create more safer gathering spaces, but you can really start thinking about those spaces to be more, create economic vitality for your businesses and also provide economic sustainability in the long run for the city. Where you can use a space that right now, for example, a street like on Monterey Road that is primarily used by non-downtown residents or community. The majority of people that are using Monterey Road do not live in our community. And if we think about the opportunity to, to create that space and instead give it to our community, we can do that, create that safety, but also provide an economic opportunity for our businesses and for the city to be able to generate revenue out of those. So we had a downtown visioning summit, as we mentioned, I'm gonna go super fast. We heard from communities that have done this. I think that the biggest, and there's a couple of notes here. We did it in person as well as in Zoom. We had 80 guests. We had folks again from Hollister and from San Jose that talked about their experience. And what was interesting about that is that you have Willow Glen as a city that did their pilot or did their lane reduction five years ago. So they have five years in the books of lessons learned. And that now they can, they can show us numbers and they can show us data as to how successful they have been. And then on the other hand, you have Hollister that quickly pivoted during COVID to support their businesses and to give them a space. And they created this lane reduction and parklet program. And what we have learned from those two cities is that sometimes you just gotta move really fast. That you can study this to a nauseam, but at the end of the day, the, the struggle between cars versus people is never gonna end. Because at the end of the day, people have strong feelings and attachments about their cars. We learned that, that there is a need to spend a lot of time with the community, not just the, the business district community, but the community as a whole to make sure that you do it right. So at this visioning summit, we also had a couple of our businesses that not only talked about their support for a project like this, but they essentially raised the bar and said that we have a vision for, for Morgan Hill and it is bigger and better than just a simple lane reduction. So you can go back to our city website and find this, the entire recording on our city website. At this meeting, we also shared with the community a survey we had deployed in downtown for downtown users, downtown customers. We wanted to hear their thoughts on what was their highest priority for downtown streets. And their answer was that they wanted us to improve safety. Another question was, how can the city improve your experience specifically on Monterey Road in downtown? And the top three answers that we got is improve safety, provide more outdoor space for dining and shopping, and slow down the speed of traffic. So this survey has been deployed to the downtown, but we're going to be deploying it for the community as a whole. And after the summit, we've been getting feedback, not just from downtown, but community all over that, that joined us through Zoom. And we've gotten good feedback and some negative feedback. Some of the good feedback includes, hey, this is great, is going to help students, pedestrians, pets and bicyclists, especially for, for those folks that are going to Britain School that is right outside of our downtown. They value the additional space and they're saying that they're more likely to come downtown walking or riding their bike with a project like this. They think that a project like this could reduce a vehicle noise. And they remind us that this, a project like this can reduce carbon footprint as well as support the many residents that we have in our community. The negative feedback is we're taking notes and we're making our long list, but it includes everything from, what is this gonna do to traffic? What is this gonna do to congestion? What about parking? And who's gonna pay for this? So on the box on the right, you're not meant to read this, but just to say that we're starting to make our long list and starting to think through, how would we go about solving those issues? So one of the questions that we've gotten from the community is, tell us about traffic and tell us about the business district and downtown, how is it performing? So this graph right here, the line in orange shows you that the traffic from 1987 to 2015 has decreased. Yet at the same time, the business district has been increasing their performance. And you can see their sales tax data has really been going up, which is really great news for us. There's two things that it tells us. More cars does not mean more revenue for that, for the city and for the businesses. And two, the nice thing for us is to finally see downtown perform at, at a really high level, just like any other shopping district in Morgan Hill. And yet we don't have a major anchor tenant like a Target or like, or like a TJ Maxx. Our anchor tenants downtown are really the restaurants. They're the ones that are driving the traffic downtown. So again, tonight is for you to give us feedback. We're going to be deploying the survey. We want to hear from you. And we want you to join us at the council meeting on May 19th. You have the emails for Chris and Hillary and myself. You're welcome to send us information. And any thoughts you have. And any thoughts you have, go on, Chris. Oh, this is to you.
Yeah, thanks, Edith. So we want to talk about what our alternatives are. Obviously, we've talked about the pilot program that we did and the opportunity for lane reduction. But there's other opportunities and you and Morgan Hill have seen these opportunities for traffic calming and safety measures. You've seen the speed humps in one location. We've talked about stop signs, we've done bull bouts. You know, when we talk about things like speed humps or stop signs, they can be used to, to slow traffic and stop traffic. But they, they have other impacts as well. So I often get reminded by some of our teammates who have been here a long time that Monterey Road in the downtown in the late nineties. Tried putting stop signs through the downtown. And it impacted traffic far worse than the lane reduction did. There's rumors that the backup backed up to San Jose as people were trying to head through the downtown with the stop signs in the downtown. But stop signs, even if they're used, don't provide that. Space between the community gathering areas and the lane of traffic. And neither would speed bumps. And in both cases, speed bumps and stop signs cause significant noise from the stop and start traffic and are often disliked by the businesses or those that are right next to them. We've done many, many pedestrian safety improvements, especially over the last five years. Every inner intersection in downtown has pedestrian activated safety measures, whether they're the in-ground pedestrian flashing lights. Or traffic signal that was added at Forest Street recently, so we've done that. We've improved the lighting through all the downtown, whether the twinkle lights on the trees or lighting at every, every crosswalk. We have barriers that are, prevent people from crossing the air streets when they, they shouldn't be. We've added signage, we've done many, many things. And so we've made improvements. We have, we have also continued to talk about the full closure of Monterey Road, which isn't really a traffic calming measure. It's an event measure, a business support measure. But if you're closing it for one weekend at a time or maybe one day a week. What it doesn't do is provide traffic calming on those other days. It, it's still an option, but it's, it's not the answer to the same request. And what are alternatives? So we can continue to work on these individual improvements to traffic calming. And figuring out how we improve safety in the downtown, because we know it's needed. But we don't think it will necessarily have the same benefit as the lane reduction program would. And when I say lane reduction program, I'm now talking about an improved lane reduction program improved over the two thousand fifteen pilot. If it was, if it was implemented, we would recommend doing it at an, in an improved level. Something that creates safety for our downtown community. The residents and businesses from both a pedestrian, bicycling and gathering perspective. And in an environment that helps in supporting the changing needs of our downtown businesses to recover from this pandemic and thrive into the future. And I think when we do this, we would want to do it in partnership, taking input from our downtown businesses. And our community members in general to figure out the best way to do it. So it wouldn't be something we would just do. It would be something we do in partnership with our community and downtown businesses. And you know, what would it mean? We, we do things more than just striping like we did last time. We'd use curves, delineators, other devices to help, help drivers understand where they're supposed to be at a much better level to protect our pedestrians and bicyclists. We would improve signage and we would do things to encourage people to take alternate routes outside of downtown. And we would do better at designing the integration of the lane closure with future parklets or use of the gathering spaces. We would also not be talking about a bike lane. The purpose of that, of taking away a lane of traffic is not to create a bike lane, is to create space for people. So space for bikes, space for pedestrians, space for room. So that the traffic is moved away from our residents that are gathering and our businesses that are using those areas. We would encourage, use this process to encourage traffic to use alternate routes and protect our downtown. Protect our small downtown from people coming, driving through it, regional cut through traffic coming through our downtown. Edith.
And you know, we, we recognize that downtown is going to be used by, by folks as, as a commuter place. And we, that's, we, our preference is that if they're just gonna commute, they go to Butterfield. One of the thoughts is that, that if they come through our downtown, which is the community's living room, that they, they do it in a respectful manner. They do it in a manner that is respectful and safe and hopefully slow. But the, the opportunity here at hand, in addition to creating safety. And repurposing something for the community is you can really create this, this parklets and this community gathering spaces. That can be a lot of fun and can be wonderful for the community. You have here some pictures from our parking day where we repurpose parking and allow the community to just have fun and activate those spaces. They could be used not only for the restaurants and generate revenue for, for us, the city, the community. But they could be used for the community as a whole. You can create mini pop-up parks, you can allow retailers to use it, you can allow nonprofits to come out and activate. There's a number of activations and uses that you can have with this space. Here, and we are, promise you, we're rounding up our presentation. The, we want to show you some examples of what other communities have done in repurposing their spaces for activation for parklets. So top left is Willow Glen, top right is Hollister with their unified design for their parklets. Bottom left is Los Gatos and bottom right is what was presented by our business community as a possibility for Morgan Hill. So the next question is, well, how much is this gonna cost? What does this mean? How do we do it? So if we're looking at the lane reduction. And then maybe add some, just the delineation of state perhaps. As it was presented as the idea of maybe some beautification with trees and a fence. That cost, that project, just that component could range between two hundred thousand to four hundred thousand dollars. So how would the city pay for this? The city, the city could consider, and on May nineteenth, we'll talk about this, a range of options. It could be the general fund, but it could also be applying for grants. It could be looking at what the city may be getting for business recovery stimulus funds. Or it could be looking at perhaps public-private partnerships with the business community. So finishing up our presentation, we want to hear from you, we want you to respond to the survey and we want you to join us on May nineteenth. And with that, I think we're ready to take questions.
All right, so once again, you can raise your virtual hand to ask questions. If you're dialing in from a phone, you can do star nine to raise your virtual hand. And then we also have the written Q and A that's open. I do ask that if you put a question there to add your email there, just in case we don't get to your question, we can follow up. So with that, I do see that we have a few hands raised. And so I'm going to ask our city clerk to unmute Liam.
And then quick, quick question, Christina, before we take questions or comments, are we gonna time it? I know that we're trying to keep this at a, at a certain schedule.
Yeah, so we just want to keep our questions brief. If the clerk is able to, we can set a quick timer, but if not, we'll just try to keep them brief. And Liam, you should be unmuted.
I think I am. Don't worry, Edith, I won't take more than twenty minutes, that's good. Just kidding. How you guys doing? So Liam Downey, I just want for the record, some people may know me, some may not. I'm a planning commissioner, I'm not here representing the planning commission, I'm just here as a regular citizen and, and very frequent user of our downtown. So please take my comments as pure personal and nothing to do with my role as a planning commissioner here. I would probably have actually a different opinion if I was representing myself as a planning commissioner. I think, so. There's a couple of aspects here, I think, and I think, Edith, one of the big concerns, and I can tell you from my own experience of even more recently, my most recent trip downtown. And I try to go down there every weekend if I can and try and support our local businesses. Thankfully, with the fact that we're all vaccinated now, we can actually go back and do that. I find the biggest challenge downtown continues to be the speed, the volume, the noise and the safety of traffic, right? And you know, we could argue whether it should be two lanes or four lanes. But even, you know, late at night. And Chris, you talked about traffic calming and humps and bumps and stuff. But the speed by which cars go through the main, uh, uh, blocks of downtown is crazy, right? For me, that's probably the number one priority. But opening up space definitely has its benefits. And I know it's hard for people who may not have lived in those type of communities where you find, where it's absolutely true that actually reducing traffic completely revitalizes businesses and downtowns. I've had the privilege, not everybody has a privilege, I've had the privilege of traveling. I've lived in Europe, I'm not saying Europe is better than here, if it was, I probably would be there, I prefer to be here. But they've gone through a lot of this stuff and they have proven over and over and over. By pedestrianizing your downtowns and reducing traffic completely revitalizes, right? And by the way, everybody loves it. The second thing I want to say is, traffic does adapt. But you have to, to your point, Chris, about, you know, you can help that along the way a little bit, but traffic will ultimately adapt. Maybe in the short term, it's a bit of a pain, but it actually does adapt. And I think we have the main arterials to make that traffic flow. And honestly, I'll be brutally honest here, if that means some of the pass-through traffic that likes to use our city streets in downtown to bypass the freeway. That they think it's better to go back on the freeway, I would say, please do go back on the freeway, right? I don't really want you coming through downtown, right? And my last point is, and this might sound a little critical, but let me ask the question, I know, Edith, because, you know, I read Facebook and all these other groups as well. And there's a perception out there that the business community you talked to was Frank Lial and nobody else, right? And this is Frank's proposal. Could you clear that up maybe and say who's participating here and who's asking? Because I don't like this, this theme sometimes that it's some single developer would, who's only interested in their own pocket to do this. I don't believe that's the case at all, right? And I'd really like, maybe you could, maybe, maybe you could address that, you don't have to do it right now, but that's, that's my input for now, thanks.
Edith, would you just quickly address that last comment?
Sure, thank you, Liam, thank you for joining us. So for the last six months, we have been holding meetings with the restaurants, especially the restaurants, because they've been struggling. Going in, going out and all the regulations that have been imposed with them. So for the last six, seven months, we've had a number of, of, of community meetings through Zoom. We've had, I don't know, as much as a dozen businesses that have engaged with us. And the business proposal that came together was from a handful of businesses. And I think many of them are here with us tonight, Liam, and I think you'll hear from them. It just happens to be that Mr. Frank Lial invested the money to, to, to put together a pretty picture to articulate the vision that the business community was asking us. So just to be clear, what we heard from the business community was, yes, let's, let's slow down the traffic, but it's not enough. Slowing down the traffic is not enough. We need to give back to the community and create more community space and we need to make it beautiful. And that is why this conversation has evolved from just a plain traffic calming to now a traffic calming with some sort of a beautification project.
All right, the next one is, looks like a Stafford.
Okay, I get to unmute myself. Can you, can you hear me? Okay, so here, here's my, by the way, beautiful presentation about safety and everything. And I, and, and to be honest, I, I'm not sure, and maybe chief, police chief can speak to it later. I don't think we have a, a lot of vehicle pedestrian accidents in the downtown. We have noise and things like that. Here's my concern. We, we are, if we do this before the west side improvements is done. We're gonna increase the, the pedestrian vehicle accident probability in, in the residency on the, on the west side. And I think these are all great things, but if, if we don't delay any of this lane reduction until after that is completed. We are gonna have more accidents in the residents caused by this and you're not planning traffic control over there to take care of that, that I know.
Thank you so much for those comments, appreciate it. Our next person is Marbi Lee.
There we go, we finally got unmuted here. So, so I was on one of the groups a couple of years back when they did the lane reduction. So I'm familiar with all the arguments. So I don't, I'm not sure where to start even. So as we saw last time when we tried this, we transferred the burden of all that traffic from downtown through the neighborhoods. And I understand that we are extending hail. And perhaps that may alleviate the problem. But the problem is, we're building more housing. We just, your council just talked about a couple of weeks ago, some lower income housing that they waived some of their requirements and increased the density for parking. So you're building more housing, you're increasing the amount of cars that are allowed to park, you're taking out a major arterial. And I mean, you can, you can extend hail all you want to and point to Butterfield. That's not going to alleviate all the traffic this is gonna cause. I have pictures from downtown when we tried this, backed up all the way in some cases to Wright or Cochran. So I, we haven't even talked about the level of service of the roads, which I guess now DNF is acceptable. It's not acceptable, we have more homes, it's growing and we're taking away traffic. I understand the need for safety and to want to do that. I'd like to know the list of businesses that want to bring this back that are, and that are for this. We've heard that Frank Lial is for it. You know, I want Frank Lial to finish his hotel and then I want to hear about how he wants to fix downtown. So I'd like to know who are the businesses, give us a list, so we know for this. You keep saying there's all these businesses that are asking for this, we're not seeing that. And residents want it, thank you.
Thank you, Marbi. So a lot of good comments for us to respond to, we won't be able to respond to all those things today, but stuff for us to follow back up on our staff report and presentation on May nineteenth. Anything, Chris or Edith, that you want to respond to right now? Okay, our next caller is Maestra Subos.
Hi, I am a resident in the area, I don't know if you can see me, sorry, I'm dialed into Zoom in a different way. I've also, I live downtown area and it's congested, the traffic a lot the past few times. And honestly, it's a safety hazard for where we live. There's currently no light or light up signal on Wright Avenue and Del Monte near the Christian School and a lot of cars zoom by. And I've seen almost pedestrian car accidents happen several times, especially when it gets darker, there's no light by the school, I'm not sure why. And honestly, I don't, I would, I would also like to hear the list of business owners who want this. But also as much as how many residential people who live in will be impacted. I would like to know how many people say they are for this, because it's going to affect us. We already have signs that slow down their traffic, slow down because there are children here. But there's gonna be more cars of people who don't live in the area zooming through the neighborhoods. There's a lot of neighborhoods downtown. And I would really not like to see anything happening with schools reopening with an accident like that happening just to produce more. Where we can open different streets to provide businesses with more space. So if we can provide more data on how accidents are going to be avoided, congestion on Monterey and East Central Avenue. In front of Britain, how that's gonna be protected, because you're gonna go down to one lane and therefore the second lane will see, won't see the cars that turn into East Central. I was almost hit there the last time this happened. So if you guys could provide more data and more strategies, then maybe there would be more residential backup for this, but I'd really appreciate that.
Thank you so much for your comments. The next person is a caller, the last four digits are zero two two one. And just by way of reminder, we do have several people calling in, so try to limit your comments, we do have a clock up of about a minute. All right, you should be able to unmute. Caller with the last four numbers, zero two two one. There we go.
Hi, my name, my name is Paul, and I'm a small business owner in the city. I've always thought that the addition of park benches and other amenities in the median uh has been a safety issue, where we have families that are sitting uh on the benches while there's active traffic. It's uh, it shouldn't be a destination point, should be a pass-through point. I'd say to Chris's point, I'm very concerned about that. Um, I'm also recommending that that area in the median of the road that we uh remove the trees, transplant them into our parks to save that resource. Use that space that's in the medians for the curb side aprons. Increase the aprons with that space that we've actually done now freed up in the middle. I know there's a lot of uh electrical and stuff, uh conduit stuff that's been put in there, where we can harvest those trees, move them into park locations, and then put a decorative concrete barrier in between the lanes. So now when there is a pedestrian, that pedestrian is clearly silhouetted against an empty background. And not against the trunk of a tree, not against the park bench, not against the barrier. They are very easy to see and uh and to detect.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate the comments.
Thank you.
All right, we have Leslie Miles next. You should be able to unmute. And Leslie, are you able to unmute? There we go.
I am now, thank you. Yes, um, I have, uh, we've had our architectural firm in downtown Morgan Hill for the past thirty-six years. And for uh the last, well, probably twenty of it, we had our office right on Monterey, and we've not always been intimately involved in what is happening downtown and particularly how my office used to be on Third Street looking right down on Monterey. Clearly, there always have been some traffic issues. And I am fully supportive of traffic coming and really uh think we need to really look creatively at how we can actually do that. Um, the traffic humps weren't that successful, the stop signs were really a nightmare. But I think it's really important, one of the things that Edith brought up, uh, is that there were, people had some negatives, there were a lot of positives but negatives, and people were really negative about parking. There, there should be parking. I think that there are communities that uh have really looked at how a downtown can integrate both parking as well as potentially parklets for small, uh, small businesses that don't have an opportunity to have other space. For example, like Opa has an excellent patio space. Um, and so they don't need a parklet, but others maybe do, like, for example, uh, Rosie's. It's hard, it's so it's, it's really one of those things where I think we can't be just, it's black or white. There's going to be gray, and it needs to be a process where we work together, we look at really what the intent is. And, and for those people that may know, we also own the granary. And the intent of developing that project was really developing that type of outside space where people can come and hang out and just be there. And also-
Leslie, do you mind wrapping up your comments? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the, so downtown depot needs to be addressed as well. It is not just Monterey, but it is downtown Morgan Hill. Our businesses provided over three percent of all city sales tax last year. So-
Thank, thank you. All right, we have Sally Cassis. You can unmute Sally.
Yeah, got it. Um, good evening, thank you for letting me speak. And I'm gonna take this uh topic to a whole different level. One day I was going, coming home from uh volunteering, and I took, well, I live on Third and Monterey. So, uh, you know, have to either go up Main and and come around the other way. But uh, there were some horseback riders on Monterey, and it totally slowed down the traffic. There was just no way that you could pass them. And um, I mean, it was, it was safe, nobody was going, you know, fast or honking or speeding up behind them. And uh, I think maybe you should have that every now and then. But I do agree that a lot of the traffic that passes by does make a lot of noise, and I think that some of the people do it on purpose to get attention. Uh, but you know, maybe you should have like an animal day, you know, like, everybody is able to bring their horse or their sheeps or, or their dogs on one day and take up that one lane. Uh, I think it'd be kind of fun.
Thank you, Sally. And and maybe some, some goats that are expert weed eaters. All right, yes, next we have Dan McCrane.
Hi, thanks a lot. Uh, Chris and Edith, that was a great presentation. Uh, I was against the traffic calming in 2016. I was against it because I watched the traffic stay, stay bumper to bumper for the longest period of time. Uh, and I also knew that it was temporary. Uh, there didn't seem to be a lot of added safety. It was just, uh, you know, harder for the commuters who are gonna pass through Morgan Hill to pass through on Monterey anyway. In the subsequent four years, I have changed my mind completely, and it is completely about safety. Uh, I, I should probably say I, I own a couple of businesses in Morgan Hill. One of them is La Dara Grill. Uh, I am outside at least three days a week dining in La Dara Grill. And I can tell you the traffic, uh, excuse me, the safety issues are real, and they're very worrisome. We can't change really what's happened to downtown Morgan Hill. Morgan Hill has transformed, is is transformed itself to the city and to the business people and to the individual citizens. It's now become a a congregation area. If you look at Morgan Hill on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, uh, lunch and evening, you can see what I'm talking about. That brings with it the potential danger. Uh, the whoever mentioned that traffic is crazy, uh, high speed running through first to fourth is absolutely right. Uh, I can tell you that I've almost been hit. Uh, and I know the others that actually uh have almost been hit. Anything we can do to improve the safety of the downtown, I think is gonna be important. We're not gonna change the fact that people love coming down to downtown Morgan Hill. As a matter of fact, I think we should embrace it, but I really do believe we have to have a special interest and special focus on safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Next up, we have Krista Rupp.
Good evening, and thank you city staff for this forum. I'm Krista Rupp, the executive director for Visit Morgan Hill. We are the destination marketing organization promoting tourism to our city, and I'd like to share some perspective from our board of directors. Through an extensive strategic planning process, Visit Morgan Hill confirmed that in addition to attracting visitors through marketing, we must also advocate for and support development that improves our tourism assets and creates new ones. This could be improved facilities, attractions, place making, infrastructure and transportation. These improvements to the visitor experience often improve that of the community too. Our Visit Morgan Hill Board of Directors recently discussed the downtown vision and length and determined that they support the conceptual direction as it relates to attracting overnight visitors and augmenting the destination experience. The Visit Morgan Hill leadership encompasses broad tourism experience across sectors and understands the many factors to determine if something is a wise and impactful investment. I'd like to end with a few words from our board chair, Michael Meredith. It is time for us to make bold and immediate strides to create deserved advantages for our town and community. Reimagining who we are as proposed in this new vision can unite hospitality. As a board, we are strongly encouraged by this prospect and look forward to seeing the feasibility reporting put forth to the community. We eagerly look forward to hearing more on this direction and joining wholeheartedly to support the vision when all steps have been taken and voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. Our next person is Erin.
Thanks, Christine, Edith, and Chris and Shane for being there and uh taking the time to go ahead and think about the downtown area. I've been a resident of downtown since nineteen ninety-seven on fifty-five East Second Street, right near Frank's Hotel that's going in. And one thing I've seen over the time is the development of the downtown. I've seen also the uh traffic calming measures such as the stop signs, um, the speed bumps and the lane closing. I'm a proponent of the lane closing because I like community, and that's why I live downtown. Um, one thing that I've noticed in in terms of uh since the pandemic is that there's less traffic. But the one thing that happened that I saw in terms of the lane closure is that Highway one oh one is insufficient to go ahead and carry the traffic that is going southbound. And so we have this, this off-ramping at Bernal and Bailey Avenue that feeds into Monterey as well as Hale Avenue, as well as Dowerty, and it all funnels through with people trying to go ahead and find the quickest way home, which it sometimes is south of downtown. And so a lot of those people in residences do not want to go ahead and add another twenty minutes or thirty-five minutes to their commute because of the lack of one arterial being downtown Monterey Road. So that's a, that's an obstacle, I think, to to uh embracing this program. Although I do think it would help downtown to have more of a community base to it and uh and 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 slower traffic. Um, I do try to go ahead and, and participate in the downtown restaurants, and I've tried to eat at La Dara Grill right next to the highway or Monterey, which is just, you know, fast-moving traffic, and it's difficult at times to go ahead and have a nice meal, although it is getting better. So, so thanks for the efforts. I'll leave it there. Put more into an email. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Uh, our next person is Doug Hall.
Hi, thank you for having this town hall on the subject. This is near and dear to me. Uh, I'm a downtown business owner at Bike Therapy. Uh, my, I live here in town, my kids attend school here in town. Um, man, I love this idea. I love the vision. Uh, and and, you know, I, I love the fact that we could create an even better environment for downtown where we have more open space, we have more chance to to be a community. Um, but number one reason hands down is safety. Uh, you know, we have uh having four lanes of traffic through downtown, and we're trying to walk across an uncontrolled intersection there uh with just, you know, blinking lights. Uh, as, as Chris talked about in his slide, uh, you know, there's, there's so many times when uh there is a, you know, you're in the right lane, that car stops for you, or that that car stops pedestrian, but the, the driver in the left lane doesn't see that pedestrian. That happens so many times, and it scares me as a pedestrian and as a driver. So I, I really think, you know, the two lanes is great. Um, you know, I think I, I attended the summit, and one of the subjects that was great was, you know, in those slides we can get to look at much today, was, you know, going to two lanes doesn't radically change the commute time through downtown. It does improve safety a ton. Um, you know, our family's a biking family, and I would not let my son ride to Britain uh through downtown because uh there's no bike lane. There's, there's not a, a designated bike lane through downtown at all in any, any different north-south routes. Um, and I think that's a key thing we need to address as a community. Um, it, it, it's, it's not about bikes, this is about safety period, and uh it's about our kids, it's about the future. And man, I, I, I'm excited just to see what happens with downtown, and thank you for-
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it. Uh, next we have T or Treffers, T-Refers or Treffers?
Uh, hello, my name is Ryan Treffers, and, and I live in downtown Morgan Hill with my wife and daughter, and I've been here for about six years. My question is, what really actually are more around the issue of uh parklets and expanding this space to allow retailers, specifically restaurants, to operate? Uh, what problems has the city seen? Uh, what has the city and law enforcement seen since allowing people outside to eat and specifically drink? Uh, my concern is that parklets that allow for restaurants to serve alcohol uh in those spaces uh will increase access as well as uh the attendant problems that come with increased access to alcohol, such as DUIs, noise fighting, vandalism, et cetera. Uh, how would the city plan to address these problems that will inevitably arise if it allows alcohol sales in parklets? Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we'll cover that when we come to the council on May nineteenth. Uh, next we have Darnell Williams.
Hi, folks, my name's Darnell Williams. Um, I, I represent Eden Housing. Um, we're a nonprofit affordable housing developer, owner, operator in California. We have about ten thousand units, specifically, we have about three hundred units in um in more, in the city of Morgan Hill. Um, we own the building that La Dara Grill is located. Um, you know, when, when I, when, when I think about this, I'm, I'm trying to be short. But when I think about this, I, I really think about how do we make this a safer community environment that also encourages thriving business? When, when I saw the renderings, the first thing that I thought about, this is like Santana Row, but this is Santana Row that's not necessarily need, um, requiring the affluent. Like, when you think of Santana Row, the people who live there are pretty affluent. Um, but this doesn't need to be that. But it, but, but the one thing that they did right about Santana Row is they, they, they created a safe environment, they created um a, a business um, um, plan that allowed folks to, to stop into the community, actually enhanced the the economics of that community. And, and also, it, it's just, it's just a family-friendly sort of community um layout. And then I, I'd also encourage the city to think about possibly creating an outdoor gathering location at the end. Um, I'm just thinking like live music festivals, farmers market. Um, the, the possibilities can be endless, but, but we're thinking community, right? Like, I, I think that has to be the forefront of this discussion is, is how do we create community? Then, um, also, you should think about the environmental and sustainability aspects of this. There's a reduced greenhouse gases element that comes with this. Um, you know, I, I could probably talk about this for hours, but you know, at the end of the day, as a parent, as a community-friendly neighbor, um, I'm personally in support of this effort, and also Eden Housing is, is in support of this effort.
Thank you, Darnell. Our next person is Joanne Rife.
Hi, um, I'm Joanne Rife. I live up in Holiday Lake Estates, and I bicycle. So my thought is, when you design bike lanes or bike paths, don't pinch them off, leaving the bicycles out in the middle of, of traffic. I think that happened when there was some kind of design that went on downtown. And you would find yourself in a bike line that suddenly disappeared, and there you were out there with a truck bearing down on you. So when the design occurs, make sure that the bike lanes go through, and so you're safe the whole way. I, I think this is a great plan, and um I hope that you pay attention to bicyclists and the lanes when it is drawn up. Thank you.
Joanne, thank you for that very specific feedback and advice. Uh, next caller is Nick.
Uh, thank you for the time. Again, my name is Nick Gation, along with my family, we are co-owners of a new restaurant in town, Craft Roots. Uh, and I just, I have a couple of comments, maybe, uh, to help the conversation. First, uh, being, being a resident here in Morgan Hill since eighty-nine, you know, our kids, our grandkids are growing up here, so uh there's a tremendous amount of passion on how we take this forward, uh, much like all of the other initiatives have been brought to bear over the past really several years. Having said that, we, we, we do just have to recognize that this, this brings certainly complex challenges. It has, you know, a lot of independent, independent elements, you know, some we know today, some we don't know, some may change along the way. Uh, and, and, and to that, having an opportunity to be a part of the business recovery discussions over the past several months, and I think, Leslie, you brought that up. Uh, and this is not something that we can accomplish successfully just with one party or another. It really needs to be a collaborative effort that really has a little bit of discipline that really- It really needs to be a collaborative effort that really has a little bit of discipline that really serves underneath that to ensure that we are maintaining not only the integrity of where we want to go with this opportunity, but more importantly, really ensure benefits of all parties. What stemmed from those conversations was really to provide consideration for a public-private partnership model that would really start to identify first the partners and the strengths that you really should be at the table, how we align those needs based on interests, concerns, opportunities and the showstoppers that really represents the businesses, the residents, the associations, the nonprofits, really the greater community of Morgan Hill. And then it really takes the final three steps to ensure that we've got mutually beneficial outcomes by really respecting what each member of the partnership brings to the table, be it resources, investments, endorsements, et cetera. And the last two phases of what we are recommending as a part of this process is really to develop, you know, a value system that hopefully is transparent, is realistic and more importantly shares open and honest communication throughout the process that allows us to maintain the integrity of where we want to go with this program. This is certainly not an easy discussion to have because it is so complex. But based on the environment that we've all experienced over the last several years, it may be the right time really to take this next step forward. But to do that, we really need to ensure that we have an approach that really represents all voices in the community and allows all voices to have some contribution, not just to the vision of what it could be, but more importantly engage in this design, its implementation and its follow-through. I think that's going to be a component that the city council will need to wrestle with as far as its motion come in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Nick. Do you mind just summarizing?
Yeah, let me summarize. And I always want to bring up a point that Dan brought up. Having an opportunity to observe the issues that are on Monterey Road, health and safety really is our number one exposure. If we're going to be able to enhance the vibrancy of downtown, it really has to start there. There are certainly routine occurrences on Monterey Road due to excessive speed, excessive noise and just unsafe driving habits that truly must be addressed before greater harm for our residents once again occurs. And that really sets the stage for the larger efforts over a period of time that can be sequenced and represented by the voice of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. And next we have Andrew Leon.
Hi, thank you, Christine. I appreciate what you guys are doing. I've been a member of the community since 2012. I've lived in Barley Place since 2018. And I can tell you from firsthand experience, me and my neighbors get together all the time. We all have kids. We walk to the park every day. We walk downtown every day. And unfortunately, you know, I think what's happening downtown is that there truly is when you're crossing these streets, you know, there is some dangers there. We have young kids and I think at the end of the day, it's, you know, everyone can talk about, you know, fuss about traffic, but until something really bad happens, you know, that's when, that's when all of a sudden, you know, everybody wants to make a change. But I think we have an opportunity right now to make the change currently. Instead of, you know, we have a chance to be proactive instead of reactive. And I think that's kind of the name, the name of this game right now is that we got to prioritize, you know, people and children over vehicles coming downtown to save a couple extra minutes.
Thank you, Andrew. Next, we have Cecilia Wigley.
Thank you. As a resident of the area west of Monterey, I live on Peak Avenue. I am concerned about the impacts of traffic. I live with the traffic noise and the racing cars on my street daily, not just when I go downtown for an occasional meal. And I'm afraid it's only going to get worse, especially if this is implemented before the hail bypasses through. Cars speed by on my street at well over the speed limit. There's times I cannot even back out of my driveway safely because of the amount of traffic. And I've heard nothing that is going to address those issues and impacts as people start looking for alternative routes when you slow down traffic in Monterey.
Thank you, Cecilia. Christian.
Hi, thank you. So just a few comments. So firstly, great presentation by all of you guys. I'm a resident of Madrone of the Capriano neighborhood, right, you know, at the corner of Tilton Hale. So I have seen that hail has become, you know, a monstrosity when it comes to people coming home and all that sort of stuff. But even with that, I do say I wholeheartedly support this measure. And I say that as someone who would probably get more traffic on hail if this were to happen. And obviously the hail bypass eventually will help remediate that. But I think it is crucial that our downtown have a living room, like how you guys said, where we can all feel comfortable. And I have seen, you know, Los Gatos, Willow Glen, they have done great jobs at the little parklets and the extra seating that they have on the side. And it has made the area a much more inviting space, especially, I mean, Lincoln Avenue in Willow Glen, before they added all of those extra spaces was really, you know, more of a thoroughfare and less of a destination. And I think that's what this plan sort of gears out at making downtown a destination, not a place to go through. And my only comment on, you know, the creation of parklets on the side and all that, having visited a couple of different towns that have done things like that, is that, you know, design uniformity should be crucial. I think building a unified code or style for downtown will not only help in place making and beautification, but it is going to help the, I mean, efficiencies in terms of building everything.
Christian, do you mind wrapping up your comments?
I'll just wrap up and say, wholeheartedly for it. And let's try to get some good design unity for downtown. Hopefully that this gets passed.
Thank you. Our next person is Sean Parent.
Yeah, thank you. I put these comments in the Q and A pod, but I wanted to just repeat them here. You know, two things. One is I really think as part of the plan, it needs to be a holistic approach and not just focusing on downtown. The city is far bigger than downtown. So there's been a lot of concern about safety and yet we still have bus stops that drop people off in the dirt along Monterey on the south and north end of town where there's not even a sidewalk. So, you know, maybe we could spend some of this money and get sidewalks across the entire expanse of the city and not just focus on the downtown area. Same thing with bike lanes. Putting bike lanes in in the downtown area doesn't help if you don't have bike lanes to get to the downtown area or if you just get dropped off in 40 mile, 45 mile per hour traffic on Monterey, the ones you exit downtown. Yeah, and the other part is just to control traffic. Monterey is still frequently the fastest way because if you drive at the speed limit down Butterfield, you will hit every single stoplight and wait there. And I've complained about that for six years, that the lights there are timed to prevent traffic, not to encourage the flow of traffic. So, so look at the whole downtown and how to get people to drive around it before you slow down people through it.
Thank you. Our next person is Tiffany Morales. And then after that, we have two more, Panos and then Rosie, and then we will conclude after that. And Tiffany, you should be ready to go. Tiffany, I think you just need to unmute and you should be good.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Tiffany Morales representing Live Lovely Al Hospitality Portfolio. We, first of all, thank you. Wonderful presentation. As you have heard from our fellow peers and restaurants, this is a community effort. Our biggest concern is our employees and our patrons and the safety of those who dine with us in downtown Morgan Hill. We have witnessed, you know, an accident happen right in front of our own establishment. You know, it's something where fortunately everybody was safe, they were fine. But, you know, we want to be like proactive rather than reactive. Safety and the wellbeing of everyone is number one priority. So slowing down downtown, going to one lane is definitely a way that we can see this go ahead and help eliminate, you know, any unfortunate circumstances, you know, to occur. So as a restaurant operator, we definitely, we would love to have, you know, all of our guests feel safe. We love the farmer's market being so close to our downtown. It's nice to see all the community, you know, coming and gathering and being able to bring their families. You know, we like to see more of that, but definitely safety is number one priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Next, we have Panos. Panos, you should be able to just un, yeah, there you go.
Yes, my wife and I have been residents here since 1993. We've both been proponents and proponents rather of the downtown. And we believe right now that we should probably hit the pause button on this until we better understand how this fits into a bigger plan regarding this. Because with all the housing that we're building now, with everything on the, on the building block, especially on the northwest part of town where we are in Yaugus Valley, we're experiencing this high traffic volume over the years. And especially in the Cochrane area where there's also a lot of building going on. And pretty soon at the corner of Cochrane and Old Monterey, we're going to see a high five-story building there with more traffic coming in on the north side of Morgan Hill, the gateway to Morgan Hill essentially. And we've yet to see the effects of that coming into our city. So, and the impact that that's going to have. And of course with that will come families, will come students, and there will be new traffic flows as well as that develops, as we all know. And with that in mind, I believe that we should probably hit the pause button on this, wait till that develops and we see the effects of that. And also as COVID, as we get the handle on COVID now and we're getting through this part of the challenges we have before us, we can get a picture of this. So I want to better understand how this fits into the bigger plan. And there's no sense of that we're naive in seeing what the downtown is going through right now. But I believe right now, we believe that we should hit the pause button on this because the shortest distance between two points right now for us to go to the south end of town where our pharmacies are and our shopping centers are that we use is through downtown right now. And we believe that we should hit the pause button on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Rosie, Rosie version.
Hi, I heard Mr. Panos. I love you, but I couldn't disagree more. Sorry about that. But years ago, over 20 years ago, we opened our restaurant, Rosie's at the Beach. And I just jumped into the Downtown Association because I love downtowns and I truly believe in it. The big problem at that time was crime, if you can imagine. 20 years ago, it was, the big complaint was break-ins, a lot of crime in the downtown area. And the solution was if we can just get some more people living downtown, they would be the eyes on the downtown and that would really help us with our crime and bringing that down. So guess what? We have them. The people are here. The residents are here. So we have to keep our residents safe because they're walking the streets every day, every morning, walking their dogs on the weekends, pushing their strollers. And we have to make it safe. If it's something that we wish for, they're here. Now we have to create a safe environment for them.
Thank you, Rosie.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. We did have one more person raise their hand. So this will be the last person and we have Brian Espirito.
Hi Christina, hi and city staff. Thank you so much for what you do. As you do know, Christine, I do live on John Tulfer for obvious reasons, right? And I just wanted to ask you guys do a holistic approach in terms of having to try. And I'm an engineer by trade, right? So if you're going to do this, try some tests, right? And see, like close it off for a weekend or two, right? And see what's going to happen. And then also try to do some traffic calming measures on like Peak and Crest and DeWitt because there is a lot of traffic that goes up, believe it or not, even towards my, my, my end of the street, all the way up to the end of El Toro, right? And then they get back down on the main, right? Because they just don't want to, through the advent of ways and all this other stuff, right? So all I do, all I ask is, I'm all for it, but please, please, please just do a holistic approach on this so that it's not just for the safety of the downtown, but a safety for the residents. Because there, the west side, the west side of Morgan Hill towards El Toro where I live is, has a transfigurational change where there's a lot of kids now moving into the area. And so please just help us out. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate the comments. All right, so that concludes our town hall this evening. We want to thank everybody for providing their comments and then their questions because this will really help us inform, further inform what we'll bring forward to our council at the meeting of May 19th. And so as I mentioned before, the Q and A, we're going to take those questions and make sure that we have emails. Those will get directly responded to and/or be included as applicable in our report. And we can also share those via our web if there's questions on there that, you know, we should inform everybody of. So with that, thank you, Morgan Hill. Have a wonderful evening and we look forward to seeing you back at our meeting on the 19th. Take care. Good night.